All right, we're gonna go ahead and start with the Seminole Airport Authority. Jake, we have a roll call.
Larry Church.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
John Kramer. Jolene Desette. Jeff Nance.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call Jake.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances from the audience, I'm assuming, do we have anybody signing, Sharon at all?
No.
Okay, for nothing, all right. Um, we're gonna, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. All right. We're gonna move on to the Seminole Gas Authority. Can we have a roll call for this one, please, Jake?
John Kramer. Chris Anson.
Here.
Jolene Desette. Dana Miller.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Trace Connor. Larry Church.
Sure.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Remove.
Second. Roll call, please, Jake.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and there's no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. To the Seminole Utilities Authority. Jake, can we have a roll call for this one, Jake?
Chris Anson.
Here.
Trace Connor. John Kramer. Jolene Desette. Larry Church.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Jeff Nance.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jake.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, please.
Remove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. All right, just gonna go a little bit quicker than normal. Moving on to the Seminole Municipal Authority. Can we have a roll call, please, Jake?
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
John Kramer. Jolene Desette. Jeff Nance.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Trace Connor. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jake.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll move on to current business, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve crossland invoice number eight and draw funds in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents for work completed at the Seminole Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jake.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item two, consideration and possible action to approve wall engineering invoice number seventeen in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents for work completed at the Seminole Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jake.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item three, consideration and possible action to approve the change order of seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and eleven cents for crossland heavy contractors for additional trench and extended press equipment pad. The change order will not impact the contract cost as the additional amount needed will be drawn from a contingency fund set aside for that purpose.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jake.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yeah.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no other items on the agenda, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do you have a, uh, executive session for the municipal authority as an addendum?
Do you wanna do those together?
Yeah, if you want to do that together, you'll need to make a motion to recess the municipal, uh, authority.
Motion to recess.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. All right, so we're gonna recess that one and come back to our, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the, uh, Seminole City Council, the regular meeting. Have a roll call, please, Jake.
Trace Connor. Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Scott Rossman.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Jolene Desette. Jeff Nance.
Here.
John Kramer. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer by his name.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shout out to heaven, please. Father, thank you for this time to be together, ask that you help us as we do the business of our city and our community. Thank you for bringing us together at this time for this, for this season. God, from our different backgrounds and our different, our different perspectives, ask that you help us to do what we are doing here today, which is the betterment for our city. In the Father, we give you praise in Jesus' name.
All right, consideration and action of consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please, Jake.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Is it to approve?
That's a yes or no?
Oh, yes. Sorry, sorry.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, with no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we'll move on to appointments and presentations. Um, consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Melvin Noe to the Board of the Seminole Community and Wellness Facilities Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. All right. We'll consider him appointed. All right, and then we're gonna move on to presentations. Um, this is the floodplain presentation by city staff members Sean Carlisle and Sharon Edmonds.
Yeah, so, this is our bi-annual floodplain presentation. You guys, uh, many of you have seen this at least a few times, but, uh, we feel like it's something that is very educational for the public, so we kinda bring it out and, uh, let folks know that we are concerned. We feel what they're going through and we want to show that there is, there is a plan in place. Uh, now, whether or not we can afford to do the entirety of the plan is, is a question that only you guys can answer. So, uh, Sean and Sharon both are certified floodplain managers. Uh, we've sent them to hours and hours of school and, and maybe some day camps or week-long camps, so, uh, hey, we're, we're proud to have two. So, I'm gonna turn it over to them and let you, let them walk you through our floodplain plan.
Just a moment, I forgot to hit the volume for the mic, so, I apologize. Yeah, hear me okay?
Yeah.
So, we put together a presentation on some floodplain information for you. Uh, you have the screen here, so we're gonna get started with it. So, little background on our floodplaining, uh, start with the National Flood Insurance Program. So, the NFIP was established by Congress on August first, nineteen sixty-eight with the passion, passage of the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, it's managed by FEMA. This program enables property owners to, and renters to participate, communities to purchase insurance against flood losses, losses in exchange for those communities adopting and enforcing regulations to reduce flood damage. The National Flood Insurance Program, or the NFIP, has received more than two point six million claims throughout its history and today protects more than four point six million properties from front flood losses. NFIP flood insurance policy can cover a building, the contents in a building or both. Policies are available in more than twenty-two thousand, six hundred communities across the country, covering low, moderate, high-risk areas. So, there's really three main components to NFIP, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program. It's got three pillars, I've heard it, the three legs to stool. Those are being, will be flood hazard identification, flood regulation and mitigation and flood For flood hazard identification, FEMA and FEMA's mapping partners put together maps. They use, uh, contour maps, they use hydrological studies, uh, to figure out where the water's gonna go, how high it's gonna get, and they use that to make informed decisions about regulating development and determine where flood insurance may be required. Uh, next part, flood regulations and mitigation. Uh, part of the NFIP, communities agree to adopt regulations and manage development in identified flood hazard areas to reduce the loss of land in property. And the third part is flood insurance. Federally-backed flood insurance is available in communities that participate in the NFIP. Flood insurance protects you against some of the risk you can't mitigate and is better form, is a better form of support than disaster systems. Individuals and communities that don't participate in the NFIP are ineligible to obtain NFIP flood insurance policies. And our goal as forefloodplain management is to minimize flood risk. We do that by planning, we do that by regulation, regulation being permitting, uh, make sure whether a building is having a negative, uh, impact on the flood zone and infrastructure improvements. Uh, we also do that by, uh, protecting property, uh, we make sure that flood insurance is available and work to reduce future flood losses. And we do it by preserving natural systems, uh, such as creeks, ravines, um, ponds, uh, things like that. Uh, what you see here is a map of our flood zones inside Seminole City Limits. The big one runs through basically the middle of town, uh, is, uh, Magnolia Creek. And you look at it, you see the different colors on it, blue being the one percent annual flood, uh, the tan or gold, that's the point two percent annual flood, and the, uh, red hashed area is the floodway. A little bit more explanation on, on the one percent and the point two percent, basically that's saying that within a year, you have a one, one percent chance of flooding, in, if you're in that area. Every year, one percent chance. If you're in the tan, the tan or gold, uh, you have a point two percent chance. We'll just kinda walk down the, uh, middle here. We'll start at the north and you see where it flows through, uh, that's Wrangler right there, uh, the Wrangler plant with ideal street, uh, flows, flows through, goes down to Highway nine there on the east, uh, crosses over. Going further south, you can see as it crosses over, it falls through, crosses North Milk Phillips. Um, we got properties that fall within the one percent, both on the east and west side of North Milk Phillips there. And you see the floodway that runs through, uh, hits the park there. Uh, the one percent kinda goes up into the golf course, uh, that's actually by design, that's a little bit of a detention area there. Walking further south, um, highlighted this area, uh, kind of a, little bit of history there. So, what you're looking at is the Wellness Center, you have the, uh, Magnolia Lake, you got the quad up there on the, uh, kinda the northern, uh, western part. And back in two thousand and seven, uh, we were granted, the City of Seminole was granted a permit to modify the floodplain there. And what we did, we were able to widen it up, we were able to, to build the lake there, uh, we were able to take out, uh, a lot of the underbrush, and by doing that, it, it really helped alleviate some of the flooding there. Used to, we, we had issues with the, uh, one percent getting down to Broadway, um, we were able to pull that back, uh, a little bit further north, um, by taking action on that and fixing some of the issues there. And we'll walk along. So, this is kinda further to the west, just wanted to show that, uh, a big part of it runs through the middle of town, but we also had issues, uh, flood zone, uh, kinda toward the western part, what you're looking at there is Broadway, has curves in the board, um, the one percent flood zone kinda goes all the way up north to, uh, College Avenue. So, those are areas we gotta be careful with. Just to kinda, a little bit of clarification on the different floods we deal with. So, FEMA classifies a flash flood as a flood caused by heavy or excessive rainfall in a short period of time, generally less than six hours. Flood, overflow of water onto normally dropped land, flooding is a longer-term event than flash flooding, it may last days or weeks. So normally what we see here is, uh, flash floods. I think the last time we actually had something that classified as a flood was two thousand Kinda go over the, uh, different FEMA flood events. May two thousand and fifteen, had a twenty percent flood event, five-year event, seen three point seven inches of rain in twelve hours. So the study that we'll have up here in just a little bit, NESHAC, the company that did it, uh, based their study on that event. The June fourth, twenty twenty-four flood, we see five inches of rain in two and a half hours. April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we got five inches of rain in eight hours, total twelve inches in ten days. And what you're seeing there, um, that part with the low water crossing, that is what that area is designed to do. It's designed to catch that water, uh, hold it there until it can, it can drink it out. Uh, so this April, this year was the wettest April we had in seventy-five years. We've gotten a lot of rain. And with all that, we've had zero businesses flooded, and a large part of that is the work that, uh, the Public Works guys have been doing, I gotta claim that, make sure that's all flowing correctly. They just, you know, make sure the floodway is protected. Okay, so, I'm gonna go over the citywide master drainage plan, I'm gonna pass this over to Sharon. Uh, what you see up there is a QR code, if you wanna scan that with your phone, that'll get you the, uh, drainage plan, it's posted online.
Hold it, I think I did.
Okay.
I think my mouse will reach. Okay, Sean took my five minutes, so I'm done.
No, you're good.
Okay, so the master drainage plan is a plan we had done after the May two thousand and fifteen floods. Uh, it was apparent to the council at that time that we needed to have something in our playbook that we can lean on later, and this was a result of that. This is a picture of the current floodplain, uh, as it was known in two thousand and sixteen. It's changed very little, it changes every ten years, but there were no, uh, no large changes to anything in our floodplain for Magnolia Creek, uh, for twenty twenty-one. This is a close-up view of the Milk Phillips area, this is why I brought this. You can see where the floodway is, that's the protected area. The only way you can build in this area is if you have previous approval from FEMA, um, which a couple of store owners did. The blue is the one percent or one hundred-year floodplain. One hundred-year floodplain is the term they used to use, now they say the one percent because any given year, you can flood if you live in this area. The green outline is the five hundred-year flood, or the point two. So, anybody that lives out here, you do have less of a chance, but there is still a risk. When NESHAC came on board, they had, uh, an overall scope that they wanted to do, and part of that was the new hydrologic and hydraulic models, uh, prepare floodplain maps if new ones were needed, survey all of the existing bridges, culverts, identify problem areas and offer recommendations for improvements. Uh, all this was accumulated and in late, in early two thousand, two thousand and seventeen, they, uh, presented us with the final document. The area that they studied were everything inside city limits, including the nine point nine string miles of Magnolia Creek and all the tributaries. Magnolia Creek actually starts way up here and comes down, these are all just tributaries that flow into Magnolia Creek, but the study did include these. And then the We Woka Tree, We Woka Creek Tributary, one point two miles, and that's the one from Strather, uh, almost to Strather, on down to Broadway and down to We Woka Creek. So, this is, um, the close-up of the problem area as we know it through NESHAC's study. Um, the floodway right now is, it's not choked off, it's just very limited in what it can carry. So, one of their suggestions, oh, this is an outline of the actual problem area that they studied, for, one of the problem areas they studied for the, uh, Magnolia Creek. One of their solutions was to take this creek area, which, which was right here, and, uh, basically dig it out and make a, uh, a flood control lake, dam it here, so that we could possibly shrink the floodplain as it comes down. The outlined red area is our current floodplain. The areas that you see between the green and the red mark, that would be areas that could possibly be taken out of the floodplain if this worked correctly. The other part of the solution for all of this to happen is this yellow area down here, blown up here, and I've got that in the next slide. This is, uh, an area across the street from the school, the academy, thank you. What they suggested was that we dig from six, yeah, right now the elevation is eight hundred and seventy feet in this area, what they suggested is we dig it down to eight sixty-one, this whole area, whatever their elevation is now, it would be dug down to eight sixty-one so that it would hold a little bit more water before it crossed Strather Avenue to go to the creek, to go to the school, to go to the, uh, the softball quad, that whole area. They also gave us a number, so for, this is problem area one, alternative two, Magnolia Creek Detention Pond, which included both of those slides for two point one oh one million dollars. Now, this was the price tag in two thousand and sixteen, and it did not include the cost of purchasing any land that we would need. One of the other areas that was studied, um, wasn't exactly in a floodplain, but it did have a large impact on everyone. This is the Twin Lakes Edition, uh, up behind Gristo Mansion, basically. You can see the lakes right here, the floodplain comes off of those lakes and goes down towards, uh, Highway three seventy-seven, Gristo Avenue, down this way. These streets right here are notorious for flooding in the streets, the sewers, the stormwater system, when it was built, uh, it was built to a certain standard, but that standard is not that great now. Um, it, it has a lot of flooding issues that we would like to correct so that we can help correct some of this down here. Their suggestion on this one is resizing the existing storm sewers, um, replace some of the metal corrugated, uh, pipe with concrete pipe and allow a lot of this, uh, stormwater to come to this existing pipe and flow into the river and then down through the normal channel of the floodplain. Of course, it all comes with a price tag, and at the time, it was six hundred and ninety-two Okay, the second, um, place that they studied was the tributary to We Woka Creek. Where's my mouse, there it is. Um, basically, here's Strather, here's Boring, and here's Broadway, and way down here is We Woka Creek. So, this is the water that starts up on Strather and continues down. And what their main objective was, is how can we make this better? Well, they found three, three areas, three main areas that we can make, that they Well, they found three, three areas, three main areas that we can make, that they thought could make this better. One was right here at the bend for Born and Broadway, basically. The other, along Coolidge, between Strather and Mike Snyder, and then along a drainage ditch in the Presidential Streets. So the first one was here at Born and Broadway. Their suggestion is to take out the four-by-four-foot concrete, concrete what?
Box.
Box, sorry. I don't have my notes. The concrete box under Jackson Street and replace it with two eight-by-sixes. That will let the water, it won't choke down anymore. It'll let the water flow free under the street and continue on its path downstream. One of the other suggestions they had was to extend this retention pond. This is actually the practice field right here. It doubles as a retention pond, but their suggestion was is it dug out a little bit more to the west so that it will hold a little bit more water. So going up from there, going north, these are four houses that they had tagged that could possibly be acquired by the city and make this retention pond even bigger, and that would help with some of the flooding as well. This would be a concrete pipe that runs underground. They suggested that we replace it, make it a little bit bigger. And this one, the blue line right here, running north and south, is a vertical concrete wall channel that runs from Strather all the way down to where a new retention would be. And you can see the outline of the current floodplain right there, and there is no color in there, meaning that there would be no more floodplain in this area. If everything were done, it would basically alleviate all flooding right in through here. But it comes at a cost of $6.3 million, basically, in 2016. The stormwater runoff through the Presidential Streets, there is already a, basically a, what, a culvert? Yeah, a WPA culvert. They suggest to replace some of it with pipe, some of it with box culvert, all the way down to where, here, where if the other part of the proposal were done, would run into this box here and down into the retention area. Another point on this slide is there is a retention pond here in front of Blue Wave, and there's also one up here. This is actually the roundabout area. And their suggestion was that both of these needed to be enlarged, deepened, and increased. Well, this one up here is the same size. However, the owner of this property who's building houses has built a retention pond right behind it. That helps to slow the water down before it gets to this point. Bryant and his crews already have assembled, getting a plan together to dig this out. We got together on the plan. I showed them the depths that MESHAC was thinking, and I think they're going to start next week if winter holds. So part of the plan, we've already got started, and we're doing everything we can to keep homes from flooding. Oh, okay, so we're going to go back a little bit. There are some funding sources for some of the things that we talked about, but as an example, I wanted to go back to Magnolia Creek and all of the things that it entails. So the cost of the project in 2016 was $2.6 million. A 10% match, which would have to come from the city, is $257,000. And that would be great, except that all of that funding is now on pause. They don't know when it's going to come back. Then there is the BRIC grant, which is also through FEMA. It's called Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. Now, it's a little bit higher match, but it is doable, except now it's been canceled for the next two years. And where, this doesn't mean that we're dead in the water. This means that we are racking our brains, looking for creative inventive ways to raise the money to work on our flooding issues. And I'm going to give it back to Sean, so don't fall asleep yet.
So just to kind of touch on some of the reasons for increasing flooding in recent years. Trigger that to climate change. Weather patterns are changing, it's shifting. We get a lot more storms here now that used to be towards the west. We're also seeing a lot of silted drainage ponds and drainage ditches that aren't upkept Silted drainage ponds, it's not holding the water as it should be. It's been neglected for years. It's just filled up with sand and dirt. And with the drainage ditches, they're not nearly as deep as where they first were dug, or they're overgrown, or they're just not there at all anymore. So these examples, what we're seeing is the water's not moving out. It's not, you know, flowing off of properties because it's kind of blocked up. Unfortunately, these are private property. City can't use funds about there and clean them up. That falls on the property owner. So we've started sending out letters in areas that we've spotted during storms, asking them to address that, so they can start cleaning those up, help the water get out, and start flowing a little bit better. And that's our presentation. We've put a couple of links on here, and if you all want to go back and kind of go over some of the floodplain stuff. Again, there's the QR code for the study. You can scan it, download it from there. If you're not able to scan it with your phone, we have it posted on our website on the front page, so. I'm excited to do it that way also. So that's it. Any questions?
The 100-year flood or the 1%, I guess, yeah. How many have we had recently?
I'll find a number. 1%, how many 1% floods have we had recently?
The last 1% flood we had was in 2007. Most of the rest of them have been flash floods. We had one five-year flood in 2015. That was a 20-year flood.
All right. Just my question is, the park is, what I heard you say is designed to catch the water, right? So like, you know, like on Facebook, there's a lot of dramatic videos of, you know, like, oh my goodness, look at someone, it looks terrible. But it was, it's supposed to do that.
Yeah, that's part of its job.
Okay.
It abated really quickly, about 5:00. It was pretty much drained.
Yeah.
I was like, wow, that's impressive. Because that's a lot of rain.
And then the properties that you're talking about, so the problem is 100%. The properties, properties that are private properties that aren't maintaining their flood area, how, how much is that contributing to it?
I wouldn't be able to tell you. Just what we see, the water, if the water's standing or it's backing up, it's going to be backing up into somebody else's yard because it's not able to flow out. You go out there and you can see the tin horns, or you rarely see the tin horns, you know. A lot of them need to be dug down to at least the bottom of that tin horn to allow it to flow out. Kind of see, if you look at this picture up here, look at the top of the picture, the little silver thing, that's a tin horn. It's doing nothing.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So at a minimum, you'd want it to be dug down to the bottom of that.
So those letters that you're sending to the property owners, are you, are you giving them maybe, are you telling them like exactly what needs to be done? Maybe like offering who can do it for them or anything?
Yeah, not anything like that. Just, hey, there's an issue here. Look into addressing it.
And if I could interject something, there's been a couple of property owners that have just absolutely, no, that's not mine. I don't have to do that. And code enforcement has had to cite them. I've had to try a couple of those cases here recently in city court, and, you know, it's, it is what it is, but they come in very upset that they, and they don't understand that that's private property. That drainage ditch or whatever, whatever that is there is on your property. It was done years ago. You bought the property the way it is. Those are not city easements. Those are not easements that, that are, that are maintained by the city. Those are up to the property owner. There's a couple of businesses that have, have those on their, I mean, on their premises and literally flow into the creek in the southern part here on Broadway, just, but I will say that the court, the municipal judge, found one in particular guilty the other day and fined him extensively and said, hey, you know, you need to get this done because if you don't, we'll be back. And we don't want their money. We don't want the fines. We just want them to use the money to get it cleaned up. So they're working on that. I know of two that were really problematic recently that, that code enforcement got involved in, so, but they're all over the, they're all over the city, so.
Well, that was my next question, is do we have an ordinance to be able to fine them?
We do.
Okay, so if they refuse to do it, what remedy do we have other than finding them? Kind of like, you know, when there's a property and we abate it and we actually use city resources to take it down and clean it up, could we do that with this after we've gone through that process?
Yeah, I, you know, the ones that I have seen are more, I think this is probably the third or fourth one that we've had, but that were really bad, but they were established. I, I, I'm hesitant to call it a waterway because that, it really, but that's what it is. It's, it's where it flows. They can't, you know, it has to remain unobstructed. And when it gets full of limbs and trash and debris silted in, it basically floods. It just goes over each side of it and onto the adjacent property owners. So there, there's an ordinance for that. To answer your question, I'm fairly certain that we could go on the property and abate that as a public nuisance if we needed to. I don't know of an instance where we have actually done that yet. Usually the property owner, after a little bit of motivation at the city court, seems to, seems to be able to comply, but, you know, there's so many of these that, you know, we're just going to have to probably tackle them one-on-one. That's a big chore for code enforcement, I know.
There are some of the people who received letters this round that contacted our office, what can we do, what do we need to do? And we have offered to come out to their properties one-on-one and show them where we feel like the problem is. When your, when your ditch is going uphill before it gets to the next culvert, that's usually a big problem. And the people that have contacted us have been pretty great, ready to help. So we haven't had a lot of backlash on the letters.
But we do offer them some guidance on what to do next.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
I will say that Bryant helped me tremendously. I thought the creek behind our church was the city's problem. I found out it wasn't. So I didn't have any idea until he took it. I was like, oh, okay. And so we took care of it because it's grown up and I said, I went for the city to come fix this, and I didn't know it was our problem. It's just like our ditch in front of our house. You had to take care of it. So we took care of it. I appreciated the help, but we didn't have any idea. And so they've been really great to help us, and so I appreciate it. I think you guys have done a great job as far as, man, growing up here and living on Highland Street, it always would flood. You know, where the GM dealership, there used to be a pond when I was a kid, and all that water flows in and stays there. It used to always flood my parents' backyard on Island. It hasn't done that even with the floods that we had, no water at all. So I think you guys have done a great job.
I think it was really helpful. The last flood was five inches in eight hours versus two and a half, obviously.
Yeah, true.
That was helpful. Wish they would put these things in disclosures when you buy a home. You know, that says, hey, this is your ditch, this is your responsibility when you buy the home. I don't know if any of that is even inclusive in that, but it'd be really nice if they would do things like that, because most property owners don't know. They assume it's the job of the city.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, nobody's calling.
They call, you're going to tell them to work, clean the ditch. Anybody else have any questions for Sharon? All right, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to current business. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve the contract for fiscal year 2025-26 with Silver Star Construction to include a 2.9% increase in the base contract price. So I guess this is, this is pretty common, 2.9%. This is what the trash was as well. I was just curious.
I'm sorry, Brad.
That's right. I was just asking if that 2.9% is pretty common, because it seemed like that's what the trash was as well.
Yes, that was the CPI, Consumer Price Index increase for that year.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item two, consideration and possible action to approve the agreement of conveyance of real estate and boundary line adjustment between the City of Seminole and Harry Coates' unit.
So you guys may know already that our line maintenance facility is on John Street there, and what we are looking at is kind of a land swap with Harry Coates to give us a little bit more land on the south side of our line maintenance. The, we own the yellow part, and Harry owns the purple or magenta part. And so what we've devised is a land swap where we would actually get more land than he's getting in terms of square feet, but it does allow us to do some expansion and it allows him a little more parking area, so we're encouraging this value for value.
There's no need to declare anything surplus or anything of that nature. It's square footage, and the city is ahead on this deal, so, and I think we've already actually kind of been operating with new boundaries anyway because of the fence and the parking. We've kind of just been working together with him just by mutual agreement, so this would be something that would formalize that agreement and cost the city nothing.
So in the contract, though, it says purchase price. Does that cost us, does it cost us, why is that?
Just a consideration is just a swap between the two properties. Purchase price is just nothing. It's just the, if anything, probably a dollar, but it's not even a dollar. I don't even think we put any monetary amount in the.
It says $150,000.
Oh, you're looking at the wrong contract.
Oh, am I?
Yeah, yeah. This is the agreement that's in your packet.
That was the, yeah. Wrong one.
You're fine. This is a zero-zero swap. No money exchanges hands, only parcels of property.
She's reading the package, it says quick claim due for both, and just wait.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion to approve. Roll call, please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on to item three, consideration and possible action to approve waiving the $5 residential cell.
the $5 residential sale fees for the weekend of June 6th through 8th for the annual citywide garage sale. Motion to approve. Roll call please, Jay.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Scott Rossman.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Nance.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Garage sale at Jay's, June 7th. All right, moving on to item four, consideration and possible action to approve $1,000 from tourism account proceeds to the Lions Club to fund ads in the Seminole producer for Snowman Wonderland in 2025.
Mr. Mayor, what we'd like to do at this point is, is take no action on this item. We've kind of been through it with the Lions Club. The ballot language on the tourism money is very specific. We can spend it on the family entertainment center or fireworks. And so the way that this was worded to come from the, the tourism account isn't going to work. They, they may come back and ask the council for something out of your general fund, but not this one.
Okay. So we're just going to table item four.
No action, yeah.
Okay, no action, all right. We're going to move on to, we'll go ahead and do our comments stuff, then we'll do this executive session, is that okay? That way.
Sure.
Everybody else can leave, so. I will go on to, let's do comments from Larry Church. We'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have very little, if nothing, to say. I appreciate everything that's been presented this evening. Feel enlightened about the floodplain stuff and I've been getting some complaints about my culverts being clogged up and had to explain to some folks about it's not the city problem, but it'll keep from wandering. I just tell people it's like sidewalks. Property owners responsible for the sidewalk, it's like they are the ditch in front of their house. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Dana?
On April 29th, the city was invited to hear a presentation. It was, it was students, OU students capstone presentations on kind of what their renderings would look like for a potential resort that could, could be built in our area. So it was, it was really exciting to see. Again, it's, it was just students' presentations, but to kind of have that energy and excitement and kind of talking about something potentially that big coming into our area was really exciting. So I was thankful to be invited by our friend Casey Schulberg to that event. And then I would like to ask everyone to check your text messages. You may have gotten a text message from AARP.
Yep.
You did?
Yeah.
Good, it's legit, it's real.
Yeah, well, okay.
So, and, and that's why we want to get that information out. So there is a handful, I kind of say like a ragtag group of us who have gotten together to address hunger in our city that has kind of come to light since the tornado and we, AARP has been an amazing resource to us. And the survey that they're doing, they're doing it out of no cost to the city or to anyone. They're donating that survey, which is, I think if we would have purchased it, would have been tens of thousands of dollars, but they donated it because they want to be a good resource and partner for us to solve this problem of hunger in our city. So just want to say a big thank you to Sean Boskow and Michelle Sauerjohn at AARP for helping us to get this survey. So typically when I get things on my phone, I'm like, block, that was not, you know, legitimate, but this one is, in fact, it should have an AARP red logo on the top. So if you see that, please fill that, that out. That's really going to help us when we start going out. One, it's going to help us tell the story, but it's going to detail for us exactly how big of a problem is, and then it's going to help us when we go out and start looking for ways to, to, to finance this, to get this, this problem solved where we don't have hungry families in our city. So, and just be sure to be on the lookout for that. And if you get it, be sure and let your family and friends, coworkers, everyone in your community or ward, let them know that the survey's out there and it would help us. That's all I have, thank you.
I did get the number, it came from 208 number, so I thought, that's an Idaho number I didn't mention.
Well, no, I was just.
Glad you said something about it because I would have looked right over it, so.
Good.
We'll go to Ward four, Chris Anson.
Well, good job to, you know, definitely to keep those businesses from flooding. I'm not sure that was going to happen that day. And I did, I intend to ask one question during this, and I hope it's okay that I still ask it. You know, we have had these rains recently, issues with the backing up of the sewer. Did we have any of that reported this time?
I'm sorry, what, with issues with?
Sewer backing up into homes with some of these heavy rains in the past?
Yes, we, we have had one that I, I was told about, and again, we can't overemphasize that code now requires everyone to have a backflow preventer. In this case, I think the backflow preventer is either not operable or not existent, so.
I was, I was just kind of curious, you know, we did all those smoke tests to try to find areas where there might have been issues. Did we find, were we able to address some of those, or was it any of that on us to handle?
You know what, that's a great program. We should have that for you guys. We'll, we'll put that together. The direct answer is yes, we identified problem areas. It's massive, as you can probably expect, but I, I think if we can start taking it into bite-sized pieces, we'll be able to deal with a lot of it.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, Mr. Scott Rossman?
Just saying it's beautiful weather and go out and golf, because that's what I plan on doing this week, so. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it, man.
All right, Jay.
I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to sit here and be part of this. As a Seminole kid, all my life, I'm honored to be here and I do, I do want to tell you thank you guys. You guys have been very helpful to me every time I've ever asked a question. I've always got a right answer, right direction. No one's ever said, you know, anything other than, here's something we can do to help. So I do like to thank Steve and Jay and I guess, I guess Brad and all these guys who have been doing this forever. I appreciate you and sharing, man, and all you guys. You guys are a blessing to me and a blessing to my church and our people. And I just want to say thank you for, thank you for allowing me, Mr. Mayor, to come sit in your seat. I appreciate it. I'm honored to be here, thank you guys.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and go myself, but I just want to say congrats to all the graduates. If you guys have never been to a Seminole Awards banquet for seniors, it is amazing the amount of businesses, people, just, I mean, citizens that want to participate in contributing to a senior, a scholarship. One last night was a new one that they presented, just presented a laptop to a student and she was literally in tears. I mean, it's just something that she probably couldn't afford, but the fact that she got a laptop was really pretty cool, so. There were so many different scholarships at Thanksgiving last night. I was, I was amazed, and I left before.
Yes, you did.
Some of it because, I mean, there were so many, I think it went on to about 9:00.
I was number 28, I left after that, so.
Yeah, but it was, it was amazing. But thank you guys for the flood information.
Yes.
Now that we've got it on, hopefully we can watch it on YouTube so people that missed the meeting can, can watch that as well, so. But that's all I have. Steve?
Yes, so the big takeaway on the flood issue is we know and we feel your pain, and we have taken actions to do what we can with the money that is available to us to try to thwart more flooding and, but anytime that you get flash floods, when you, anything can flood. And one of the, I don't know if you said it actually, but one of the things that FEMA points out is if you get enough rain, we don't care where you're at. You can flood anywhere. It doesn't need to be in a floodplain. We found that out in 2007 when Hurricane Aaron just kind of set over us and spun there for a while. But we're cognizant, we do, my guys do a tremendous amount of work clearing those drainage ditches and the culverts that are important to the floodway to keep open, especially ahead of a known rain event. We're spending a lot of manpower and time trying to get those things ready to receive that rainwater, so I just want to applaud my guys. I know a lot of times they don't get the recognition, but they really showed out. And to have no businesses flood in the wettest April on record since, in 75 years, bravo, they did great. Hey, opportunity for everyone to volunteer this week, Thursday and Friday, Seminole is hosting the 2A State Baseball Playoffs. And my understanding is they're still lacking on some volunteers. It may, it may not be cooking pizzas, it may be trash duty, or someone to refill hand towels, or, but we're going to have thousands of people visiting Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and we would love to have a few more hands to lend. And if you, if you just want to show up there at the concession stand and say, I'm here to volunteer, come on, we'll, we'll find a way for you to be involved. I just want to thank you guys for the valuable time that you lend to us and to our community. Tomorrow, we will begin the arduous task of budgeting, and it's a lot of man-hours that you guys are going to spend. And I know Jay loves this, this time of year. It's kind of like Christmas for Jay. But the rest of us, it's kind of a, it's like plowing a field, right? So, but tomorrow, we'll begin those budget sessions, and I think you're really going to, seriously, I think you'll enjoy a lot of it. Some of it gets kind of tedious, but the rest of it, it's an eye-opening experience to go through these budget sessions. You know, where you think you might want to be spending money, there are five other priorities at the end of the day that you think, well, okay, I need to not put that as a priority. So looking forward to that. Be sure and keep July 8th on your calendar, that is election day for our sales tax to help us pay for the sewer plant. We really don't want to fall back into Plan B or another option because those really begin to tax our poorest citizens. When you start adding water bill expenses or sewer bill expenses, in this case, it kind of, it can hurt those on fixed income. So please get out and vote July the 8th. I just want to reiterate on AARP, that's a, it's a big deal. I'm like you, normally when I get something like that, want me to take a survey, I'm like, no. But one of the things that we've learned over the last several years, especially with the Community Markets Group that comes to Seminole with the mobile market, is that we've got thousands of families that are food insecure, meaning they're not entirely certain how they're going to eat the rest of the week. And so they're trying to come to these mobile markets and get food. And so, so AARP kind of raised their eyebrow like, wow, is there really that kind of issue in Seminole County? Ultimately, what we hope happens is that that AARP survey will open the doors for us to write many grants. And there are grants out there, and that's really what we're trying to get to in the end. So that's all I have tonight, thank you.
All right, City Attorney?
You asked a question about Dana, the ordinance on property owner responsibilities. This one is a little bit, I won't say obscured, but it's not in the criminal code, it's under our stormwater and drainage section, which is under Title 12, but there is about five elements on property owner responsibilities, and it's pretty clear. It says a property owner, any property, developed or undeveloped, shall keep clear all drainage channels within the boundaries of their properties, take reasonable and prudent measures as to not cause drainage, interferences, obstructions, blockages, or any other adverse effects upon drainage onto, through, or out of their property. And it goes on, so it's real specific. So I wanted to, to, I know Brian's probably happy that I'm putting this out on public record here so that, so that everybody can, can know that that's what, that's what we're talking about. And so it's there, it's there. And Jeff, thank you for the kudos. I want to tell you, I'm, I'm proud you're here too. I was getting a little tired of the, you know, Corey and, and Chris say a good prayer, but you know, I'm, I'm kind of tired of hearing the same old ones, okay?
I told him he was taking that.
Brad, or Steve, I'm wondering if that ordinance could be put on our Facebook page, on our website, to just, so just normalize the fact that it's not the city's responsibility.
Please do.
Thank you.
All right, one more thing about the floods. Whoever has that truck with the green and white lights on the back, I need someone to equip my truck like that. That was pretty cool. Those were very visible, by the way. It was kind of a overcast day, but that was pretty cool. I don't know if you guys saw it or not, but instead of, you know, a lot of your road construction crews will have the red, white, and blue on them or something like that, but there's one of the, I don't know whose it is, but there's, there's a truck that has green and white flashing lights on the back, and so they know it's the city worker gets green and white, so that was really cool. So just want to put that out.
We'll put that in the budget for you, Mr. Mayor. We'll see if it makes it through the work sessions.
Yeah, I don't think it'll work. I think it's probably illegal to put a green and white on my truck, but anyway. All right, we need a, we have an executive session in our orders, in our agenda, so we will, if anybody wants to make a motion to enter the executive session.
Someone.
All in favor? Any opposed, like, sign.